...twenty-fourth. Selectman Green will be joining us in a minute, and I believe Selectman Heller is on the phone.
Hi.
Okay. So let me just go through the formalities with remote participation pursuant to this board's authority under the nine forty CMR twenty-nine dot ten parent eight. Selectman Heller will be participating remotely via telephone due to geographic distance. There's a quorum physically present, and all votes taken will be by recorded roll call, and Selectman Heller will be allowed to vote. There's a remote participation checklist which I've reviewed, and we meet the requirements. So that's the formality. Couple of announcements. The Towns refuse collection is going to be changing in a couple of months, and we're going to a hybrid pay-as-you-throw system, and you must choose a new waste cart by March tenth, and this can be done on the Towns' website. BrooklineMA.gov slash H P A Y T, and I believe there's a link to it right on the Towns' homepage. If you don't have internet access, keep an eye out for an informational postcard to be in your mailbox within the next seven to ten days, and you can return this prepaid postcard to the Department of Public Works for your waste cart selection. If you don't-
I just want to add that we're encouraging everyone, if possible, to go down to the thirty-five gallon, which is holds, it's like three bags of trash, I think is how they describe it, but, and, you know, the commissioner is hoping all of us make a commitment to more recycling and less solid waste.
Right, and if you don't respond, you'll get the thirty-five gallon bin by default.
Right, but we should, we should mention to people, though, there is going to be an opportunity, if you take the smaller one, or you get given the smaller one by default, there is going to be an opportunity to say, oh, I made a mistake-
Right.
-and trade, so people, people should just be plugged in on, on that decision.
Right. The Brookline's Pan Asian Lunar New Year Celebration will be happening on Saturday, February fourth, at between one and three at the high school, Montlough King Room, and it's to celebrate the Chinese New Year, the Korean Seolul, and Vietnamese Tet, and you can enjoy Pan Asian food, music performance, musical performances, crafts and games, lion dancing, Chinese yo-yo, and more. And it's free, open to the public, and then more information on the Towns' website, and this is, this is a few weeks from now, so we'll be announcing it again. But that's some advanced word. This Thursday evening at Coolidge Corner Cinema is going to be a very interesting program, the Sole Witness Brookline Holocaust Program. I'm told it is sold out. Back in the nineteen nineties, Stephen Bressler, and spearheading the project of interviewing Holocaust survivors as kind of an oral history, and these tapes have been sitting in a file cabinet for twenty-five years, and this board appointed a Brookline Holocaust Commission to preserve those tapes and, and facilitate the making of a documentary, and the first efforts of that effort are happening Thursday night at seven o'clock, but as I said, I do believe it's sold out. Any other announcements?
I want to plug a meeting that's going to take place in just over a week, February first, and it's the kickoff meeting of the Selectmen Senior Tax Policy Committee, a committee that was convened in response to passage of a resolution at the November Town Meeting that's going to look at provisions we might be able to make in our property tax collection for low and moderate income seniors. So, again, Wednesday, February first, room one-eleven of this building, Town Hall, starting at six-thirty PM.
Okay. Selectman Green?
I'd just like to mention that few of us attended the Mass Municipal Association meeting this weekend. Instead of going to the inauguration in DC, we decided to listen to great speakers and the induction of Mel Kleckner as the president of the MMA. You know, a lot of people, I mean, not a lot, but few people think that Selectmen or others going to these meetings at all these fancy locations such as the Heinz Auditorium are wasting time and money. I'd like to just say that these are essential components of our job. We learn a lot, we get outside of our bubble and learn from other people, other towns, the issues that they face and the solutions that they have come up with to problems. I think it's really, really critical to our job and, you know, doing our job effectively to attend events like this. So I always advocate for these things, even though a lot of people have a narrow, I mean, not on this board, but a lot of people in the community have a narrow view of Selectmen or other elected officials learning things outside of, you know, the town or, and learning about things outside of our local concerns, so.
Well, and we should congratulate Mel on becoming the president of the Mass Municipal Association. I'm happy to see others recognize your talents, as do we.
Thank you very much.
And I'll just pitch a meeting next Monday, kickoff meeting of the Coolidge Corner Study Committee, which is studying proposals for the Waldo Durgen Garage site, and that's, that's the site at the corner of John and Pleasant Street, right diagonally across from the Coolidge Corner Library, and they're also going to be looking at a redevelopment proposal at the Holiday Inn. This meeting is going to be Monday evening at seven, though I think this particular meeting is going to be more housekeeping, getting, getting the committee going, assignments, organizational stuff. I don't think there's going to be much developer presentations at this meeting, so it's one of those things we have to do before it gets really interesting. Okay, so on to the public comment. We have some folks signed up for public comment. I have three folks signed up for public comment. Let me just say something about public comment. I know you're going to be commenting about some issues at the Brookline Audi dealership, and this format, I don't know, it's, it's, I don't know if it's the best format for doing this kind of thing, because we don't have staff here to respond, and we also don't have representatives of Brookline Audi, so.
But, but we should note that, that we have a copy of, an email from Mr. Maloney of our Health Department, who says that he has mailed a notice of violation-
Right.
-to Brookline Audi.
Right.
So the Health Department has acted.
Right, and, and I do know that we've committed to having a meeting, or having a hearing regarding Brookline Audi, if you so desire, where we would have staff present and representatives from Brookline Audi to respond if they so choose to come and respond. So with that said, we'll be happy to take your public comment. We're not going to respond to it, and, and I believe you were told three minutes each? Okay. State your name.
I am Dr. Dr. Hal Rosenblatt, owner of eighteen East Milton Road. I want to thank you, Selectmen, for allowing us to express our concerns. Also speaking, Richard Moore, licensed architect, twenty East Milton Road, Unit One, and John Motzus Furniture Maker, Property Manager, owner, ten East Milton Road. Soheil Sahid is here, owner of number three, unit number three of twenty East Milton Road. Will not speak due to town constraints. I will address car carrier unloading and Route Nine sidewalk parking. You have been sent multiple photos and logs of car carriers unloading vehicles on both sides of Cypress Street. Today there was one that John Motzus took a video of unloading cars at the T-stop, but they have been at both sides of Cypress Street, including in front of the La Fuega Restaurant. The car carriers at times have been unloading cars. In fact, John and I witnessed one this evening on Route Nine going eastbound with two new cars that they were unloading. The police were called. They have been very responsive and say that they've been concerned about this issue themselves. The problem is that they're blocking the sidewalk and the bicycle lane when they're unloading these cars, either on Route Nine or on Cypress Street, and this does occur and has been documented to occur after nine PM tonight. Another issue is there are parking cars next to the showroom on Route Nine, Boston Street. The issues appear to be in violation of conditions and limitations set forth in the Board of Selectmen meeting eight twenty-six fourteen. Livia Butters are seeking your help to protect the safety of our houses, children, streets, air quality, and our nearby schools. Thank you. Mr. Moore will present next.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Richard Moore. I'm the owner of unit one of twenty East Milton Road, and I'm going to address the parking adjacent to property, that property being Audi dealership. Beyond the many other disturbances in our neighborhood caused by irregular activities of Audi, there's a constant shuffling of cars at the end of East Milton Road. They're stacking six cars in a row, or seven sometimes in a row, and they have to go off for lunch or whatnot, so they're constantly shuffling cars on our very small street and causing congestion all day long. Beyond that, they're working beyond nine o'clock, causing more disturbances, and they're working on Sundays, parking their cars adjacent to the property. It feels like a private way is sometimes an extension of Audi's property. We are further frustrated in the fact that the Brookline Building Department has claimed that they had no jurisdiction of license conditions. The same for the Health Department. The Health Department will come for noise or for air quality issues, but they don't have jurisdiction of a license. Now, the police do have jurisdiction of a license, but we have to call the non-emergency number, and so oftentimes, by the time they get there, and they have been responsive to us when they have the time, the incident is over. They're, they're done with their irregular work, and that's very frustrating. John will speak next.
Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is John Motzus. I'm the owner of ten East Milton Road, and as soon as the change of hands from Herb Chambers from the, the O'Neills and Herb Chambers new license to sell these used cars, they've been, they've been performing work in the open, uncontained. They have a dent wizard truck that shows up, they have a nice wheels company that shows up, and they jack up the car and take off tires right in the middle of the parking lot. They take these tires off and put them in the van, but the doors open the whole time. They grind the wheels, spray it off with the compressor. Meanwhile, the compressor noise is going the whole three to four hours that this process takes for one car to do. They spray off this aluminum alloy dust, goes out everywhere. This man's wearing a respirator and hearing aid, earring muffs the whole time. I'm a woodworker, so I understand that if he's buffing and sanding, that dust is going somewhere, it's not being contained. Then, after the buffing is done, he masks off the tires, and he sprays it with some kind of catalyzed clear coat lacquer or some kind of spray paint, which the fumes, and I can smell it when I'm in my backyard. I have made finally a complaint, and they cited them with a cease and desist order because Inspector DiGren came and finally witnessed this and issued them a cease and desist order on January twelfth. I have compiled scores of times where this has happened just since November, when I started recording, but this started all through the summer, we have to listen to it. I didn't realize that it was a violation of their, their license agreement set forth in two thousand fourteen, and even the day after their cease and desist order, a smaller dent wizard truck came and actually was peening out dents with a hammer, tink tink tink, and I could hear it from in my kitchen. And we're just very fed up with having to breathe, listen, whether it's air pollution, chemical pollution, it's unacceptable, and it seems as though they don't, the rules don't apply to them. And just as Hal, Dr. Rosenblatt was stating, we just had a car carrier, seven-thirty at night, taking up the full lane. He felt to mention that in front of, when they're parking cars in front of the showroom, they're straddling the curb, they're half on the sidewalk and half in the curb, and there's a sign that says, no parking, right there in front of it. Today, they were unloading a car on Cypress Street in, in front of the bus stop, taking up the bike lane and the bus stop, and that's right on Cypress Street, right on the corner of Milton Road and Cypress Street, Milton is directly adjacent to us. And I have sent you guys, we set up a, so he'll help me set up a website so you can see and hear and watch these scores of violations. Thank you for your time.
Okay, so in the next few weeks, we'll have a hearing, we'll invite their representatives, we'll have Health Department, Building Department staff, and-
Can I have one more sentence? Please. Sorry, I know, after this, we're done. We appreciate your time, but in the minutes of eight twenty-four fourteen, it was noted that there was a previous cease and desist order at Herb Chambers, the one that abuts Alston Book on writing where the Claire Flower Company is, and I'm not exactly sure what happened, but we're trying to get a copy of that cease and desist order. The Health Department has been aware of it, and they said exists, so there is that history.
Okay.
So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Moving on to our miscellaneous calendar, we have a question of approving the application of New England Treatment Access Doing Businesses NEDA for change of alternate manager from Bri Rodriguez to Lisa Bammel, and for the addition of an alternate manager, Simone Berg. And is anyone here from NEDA? I don't think we, you know, the, this is pretty routine.
Alternate manager, we typically don't require.
Yeah, this is pretty routine, and Police Department vets, the, the applicants, so I've reviewed the application, and everything appears to be in order, so I'll move that we approve the application of New England Treatment Access Doing Businesses NEDA for change of alternate manager from Bri Rodriguez to Lisa Bammel, and for the addition of an alternate manager, Simone Berg. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye, can you hear me?
Yeah. Selectman Green?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Next item is the question of approving and executing contract in the amount of four-hundred-and-fifty-three-thousand dollars with HMFH Architects for the Brookline High School Expansion Project Feasibility Study. Mr. Masak?
Yes, this is to study the feasibility of expanding the high school due to an enrollment, a substantial enrollment increase. A substantial enrollment increase.
Sorry.
And we did have a committee of seven back in the summer, and HMFH was selected as the top architect.
I know the high school study committee has been meeting and, and is active, and, they need to get this contract in place so they can get going in earnest. Any questions, comments?
So I had a question about the survey fees. In the cover letter here, it says that survey fees are additional to the expense that's included in this contract, because the scope of the sites to be studied and the areas to be surveyed are yet to be defined. Do we have a sense of what the additional expense is going to be for surveys?
We'll probably do the survey in the schematic design.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Therefore, I'll move that we approve and execute, approve and execute the contract in the amount of four-hundred-and-fifty-three-thousand, which dollars with HMFH Architects, Inc., for the Brookline High School Expansion Project Feasibility Study. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
And Selectman Green?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you, Mr. Masak.
Thank you.
And we have a, we have one, temporary alcohol license. This is a permit to serve alcohol Lars Anderson Auto Museum for a cocktail reception on Thursday, February ninth, from five-thirty to eleven at Fifteen Newton Street. Review the application. Everything appears to be in order, and I'll move, I'll move this temporary permit. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. And the last item on our miscellaneous calendar-
Yeah, this, this was, I neglected last week when I brought forward a list of people to be on the Kent Station Street Parking Lot Study Committee. I've been getting a lot of emails from people about, put this person on, no, that person can't do it, kind of thing, and so I, I neglected to put on Alan Christ, who is an architect. He is, lives in the area, and I, he'll be a good addition to the committee, I think. I was supposed to have had him on the list last week.
Yeah, I've worked with Mr. Christ and so has Selectman Franco.
Absolutely.
And I think he'll be a great addition to your committee. So I'll move that we appoint Alan Christ to the Kent Street Lot Study Committee. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Okay, so I'll, I'll start the next part of our calendar with an apology. As, as those of you know me, it's apparent I have a bit of a cold, so I'm a bit under the weather, so I'm reaching down for tissues, and I'm sniffling, so, and I'll suggest everyone stay away from me. So we have some board and commission interviews. We have Jonathan Kapust, is he here? Oh, did I come on up? Did I say your name right?
Kappus.
Kappus.
It's fine.
Okay.
Not the first, we'll do well.
So tell us about yourself and your interest in the Transportation Board. Looks like you are a transportation professional.
Yes. Again, my name is Jonathan Kappus. I've lived in Brookline for the last three years, in Boston since two thousand nine. I currently work at an engineering firm in Boston proper. I've worked on multiple transportation projects, varying size and format, from state design projects, which obviously wouldn't occur in Brookline, but also projects that occur along the M M necklace, including the Casey Arbway Project in Jamaica Plain, several other key bus route studies, including, which include the sixty-six and the fifty-seven, and other various projects, South Station Expansion Project for, for a more transit oriented example. Have you observed our Transportation Board? Have you gone to any of their meetings?
I have not been to the Transportation Board. I've been to the Planning Board meetings.
I would, can I suggest that you speak with the Chair of the Transportation Board, just to get a feel?
Absolutely. Actually, I do know one of the members of the Board, Ali Talley.
Mm-hmm, okay.
So he actually recommended that I apply for this.
Sure. Yeah, I would recommend that you give Josh a safer call, or send him an email.
Sure.
And you guys hook up and talk.
Yeah, I'm, I'm co-chair of Brookline as an age-friendly community, and I will say sometimes, I'm also on the Council on Aging, and there's sometimes a sense that the Transportation Board is not hearing the voices of particularly the seniors in town. And what's your experience been at public meetings? How have you participated? Have you run public meetings? What's, what kind of outreach have you done?
As part of the Casey Arbway Project and also the, the Austin Interchange Project, I've been involved in a number of public meetings and task forces on that. Obviously, the goal of any public meeting is to get the best input you can from the people who live in that area. You know, we're not there all the time, so anecdotal evidence is just as important as, as studies, and in some cases can provide insight that you can't see in a traffic count or, or crash data. When working on the Casey Arbway Project, we looked at a number of different perspectives, from whether it be pedestrian, bicyclist, vehicular movements, as well as getting input on, you know, landscape design, architecture, things that you don't normally ask for in a transportation project. Usually, you're, you're looking for maximum mobility. The complete streets method of design is important to me as a person. Also, we put a great deal of emphasis on accessibility, especially with an aging population, like you mentioned, you know, existing wheelchair ramps and, and crossing signal systems, pedestrian, accessible actuated push buttons need to be upgraded for those populations. Specifically, on those ramps, you know, a lot of them are designed for a standard width of five feet, which really doesn't, in my opinion, doesn't meet what we do now as people, you know, we roll, even if you're not disabled, we roll strollers, we roll luggage, we roll, especially in Brookline, people roll carts with their, with their groceries in them, and all those things, if two people are trying to use it at the same time, it's not wide enough for that. So, so that, for me, it's, it's counter to what we try to do as industry professionals in trying to create good routes for people to travel safely. Most of those side streets aren't striped for center lines or have proper stop control systems for larger volumes of traffic, and yet people will use them because that's where their map tells them to go. As far as Uber and other Lyft and other shares such as that, they're all well and good, and from a standpoint of an economic method, I've used them myself. I find the biggest problem with them is they stop wherever the person is. So they'll stop in a bike lane, they will stop in a bus stop, they will stop in, you know, in a metered parking spot. They'll make U-turns on the road. There are methods that they, that drivers use as drivers for Uber and other, and other-
Right cheers?
Yes, thank you. That, that are counter to what a taxi driver would tend to do. And then I'll also mention, I'm a big proponent of Hubway, and I think, and other sharing methods, so Zipcar and other types of share uses, and I think it's an opportunity for Brookline- for Brookline to grow along with Boston and Cambridge and Somerville and build that, that bicycle network. Um, there's been a lot of good growth in Brookline with bicycle lanes, especially that, that, uh, that road diet. I don't know how the study's going right now, but, um, from what I've seen, it's not that anecdotally. It doesn't seem like it's, it's harming traffic terribly. Um, but I know that as bicycle networks grow, there's a greater need for mobility for that last mile, um, off of public transit, and Hubway provides that. And also Zipcar, you know, in a, in a town like Brookline, it opens up opportunities for people to travel outside of Brookline without having cars in Brookline.
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll agree with you on Hubway. Um, I'm, I'm the board's rep to, uh, to Hubway, and, uh, one of the, um, challenges, uh, Hubway faces in, in, in Brookline is, um, the, the, the financial model has, has relied on, um, sponsorship and institutional support, and, uh, we don't have quite the institutions that Boston and Cambridge especially have. You know, they partnered with Harvard and MIT and...
New Balance.
Yeah, New Balance, though, uh, we, we join the New Balance partnership, so we get a little bit, uh, from them, but not, but we only have four stations and we don't have the, um, kind of the, the, um, the financial foundation to expand it under the current model, though we're hoping to change it. Um, but that's, that's, that's me pontificating, but I, I was at the, um, Transportation Board meeting last night and, and, and the topic was, uh, a reconfiguration of Babcock Street and, uh, the question of, uh, excuse me, bicycle accommodations and, uh, traffic calming. And, um, so there, there was a diversity of views on, uh, the nature of, uh, of bicycle accommodations and the trade-off between, if, if, if you, um, if you do probably what's the best bicycle accommodation, a, a separated bicycle track, um, you're, you're taking away parking, so there's resistance from the, the neighborhood to, uh, uh, to keep the parking that, that's there. And, and, and what, what I observed was the Transportation Board kind of listening to all sides and trying to forge some kind of compromise. And how do you feel about that, that process where you may not get the perfect solution, but you get one that's perhaps politically doable?
Um, it, it is a process, I will say that. Um, I think balance is always important on transportation projects to, to push in one direction or another. Um, you, you tend to not end up with something that satisfies all the users and focuses specifically on one. If you, if you work to give everyone a say in, in, to some degree in what is going on within that, that right-of-way line to right-of-way line and break open the, the roadway in that manner, instead of just looking at, this is what's available to cars and this is what's available to bikes and this is what's available to pedestrians, let's do that, it opens up a lot more compromise in terms of what you can do with that space. You know, um, uh, just because it's such a large project, I'll mention the Casey Arbway Project again. Um, you know, that project has, um, you know, thirty-four thousand cars that travel through it every day, east, east to west, um, and at the same time, we've managed to put in, um, eight-foot wide sidewalks throughout the entire project area, along with twelve-foot wide bike paths off-street. Um, now granted, there was a large right-of-way in that area, but, um, it took a lot of compromise to get to that point. Um, I, I don't know how or where you are of the public process that went through on that, but there was a large advocate group hoping to replace the, uh, the bridgeway in that area, and, you know, we had thirty-four, uh, public meetings prior to, to coming to that conclusion, that it should be an accurate right-of-way.
Any other questions? Yeah, we're, we're not going to be voting tonight, but, uh, I would encourage you to, uh, get in contact with Mr. Safer.
Dr. Safer. Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
No, thank you very much. Have a good night.
Yeah. And next one up is Judith Kidd. You two are, uh, applying to the Transportation Board.
I am.
And the, you know, the, uh, you're, you're not a transportation professional, but the board is a mix of transportation professionals and then, uh, citizens.
That's correct. I made it really clear in my application that I'm, you know, in fact, I don't read maps well, so, so, you know, I was, I felt like having it opened up and GPS arrived. So, now my, uh, I've lived in Brookline since nineteen eighty-one and since nineteen ninety-one, I have lived in the same place on Parkland Street. And during the years that I have been here, I've obviously reached the senior citizen age, so I am...
It's not so obvious.
Thank you, but it's there. Um, so there are a number of things. I have always been a public transportation person throughout my working career, either in Harvard or downtown Boston. I always took the T or the bus. Uh, I'm an avid walker, uh, and I do own a car, but I try not to use the car here in Brookline or in Boston because it's, you know, a hideous experience. So my particular interest here, and I was asked to consider this by a friend who's on the Bike Commission, Cynthia Snow. We were in an exercise class together, and she's an avid biker, as you know. Um, I no longer ride a bicycle, but I'm very aware of the problems sometimes with bicycles when I step off the street and the bicyclists are not paying attention to the other signs there. However, I don't want to demonize bicyclists because many pedestrians do this, do not observe the right crosswalks and many cars do not observe the rules. So I'm very aware of the problems that senior citizens face in terms of how long we get to walk across the street, how long the signals are, how steep the gradients are. I'm particularly aware of bad lighting, which I know the Brookline Community Aging Network is taking a look at, so, um, crossroads and various other places where it's too dim. Um, so I would bring, I would say that concern. I also bring a town-wide concern. I was on board of the Brookline Community Foundation for over thirteen years, and I was the chair for three years of the board. I was also, at one point, the acting executive director. So I felt, I feel as if I have a sense of, I live in North Brookline, but we always had to pay attention to across the road, uh, so I am sympathetic also to their needs for public transportation there, and, uh, I am concerned also about, um, the siting of the school, uh, and the transportation concerns there. So I bring a generous view.
Sure. Have you, have you observed any of the Transportation Board meetings, have you?
No, I heard you asking that. No, I have not, and I clearly should.
And I would suggest you two, uh, have a, have a conversation with Josh Safer, uh, who's the chair of the Transportation Board, and he can fill you in, give you a better feel for how they operate and...
Mm-hmm. I'll do that.
Yeah. Um, questions?
Yeah, so when you said you were concerned about, uh, the siting of the school, you mean us choosing the Baldwin site?
I'm concerned all the way around about how Brookline is going to deal with bringing a new school into an area that still has always believed deeply in being able to walk to your neighborhood school, and about how we deal with the fact that we may no longer be able to do that. So I'm concerned about adding a huge busing component for some students, um, because it'll just, it's, Brookline is crowded enough as it is. I am not, I am not opposed to...
And we have chosen that site already.
Yes, you have.
A long, long, uh, public...
I know you have, and, uh, so therefore I would pay attention to how you're going to remediate the parking and driving concerns.
Selectman Franco?
So this board, uh, can do a lot of things, but there are a lot of things that are outside of our control, and we're going to have a hearing on one of those things, uh, later this evening, about a forty B, uh, project that's, uh, that's going to be, uh, at twelve-ninety-nine Beacon Street. Uh, I want to ask you about, uh, transportation policy, uh, which is something else that we can't really control. Uh, one of the blessings about Brookline is the streets go both ways. You can get out of Brookline and you can get in. Uh, and there are a couple of examples in recent memory where, uh, a municipality bordering Brookline has built a large project, which has had a traffic impact on us. Uh, and here I'm thinking about recent development up in Chestnut Hill, where the Wagonines went in and there was a huge influx of traffic that came, uh, across the border without Brookline getting any of the ability to control how traffic moved around, uh, and none of the tax revenue that came along with that development. Uh, Babcock Street was brought up before by the chair. Uh, there was a hearing last evening, uh, and there's also talk of a major transportation infrastructure project just over the border, uh, the construction of West Station, a new commuter rail station, a multimodal, um, transportation hub, which I imagine is going to have some impact on traffic on, on Babcock Street. It's going to be a whole lot more desirable to shoot down Babcock Street, get on a commuter rail, um, uh, train there, or to catch a bus that's going to go to points yet to be determined. How would you, as a member of the Transportation Board, deal with these sort of issues that clearly we as a town have to, um, to take action, uh, on, but really don't have direct control over? Is there some sort of strategy you think we can employ to make sure that we preserve the character of our streets while also, uh, allowing for our citizens, our residents to get to and from?
Well, it would take the wisdom of the ages, but I would say that being the bully pulpit for Brookline's needs, for instance, I know that on Babcock Street, which isn't too far from me, that there's a lot of work being considered on traffic calming, and that I understand that that road is a straight road through, and in fact, it had, I believe it has different speed limits because it is a direct access road, whereas, and it's has virtually no pedestrian crossing places in it. So it seemed to me that, first of all, we can do local action, so that if that West Station is there, we've already put in traffic calming pedestrian lines and things like that. Except maybe it's solved.
Um, we're not making any decisions tonight, but I would, uh, again emphasize, uh, it'd be a good idea to call, uh, get in touch with Josh Safer.
Will do. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um, we have a public, we have a couple of public hearings noticed at eight o'clock. It's now about, uh, twelve minutes to eight. So what I'm going to do is, um, take an item out of order, um, the fiscal year two thousand eighteen budget objectives. Mr. Faison?
Good evening. Uh, Austin Faison, Assistant Town Administrator. Um, so similar to last year, um, I've compiled a list of forty objectives for the Board of Selectmen. Um, they are taken from, um, different departmental objectives, um, but they highlight a lot of the, uh, good work being done across the town. Um, Selectman Franco, I have, uh, your edits, and, um, we'll take those under consideration. I was wondering, would you like me to introduce the, um, three additional objectives that, um, you proposed, or would you like to bring that up with the group?
Well, we can do it however you want. I can, uh, put my reputation on the line and talk to my colleagues, or you can carry my water for...
I'll, I'll handle that. Um, so in addition...
So we'll shoot, we'll shoot down, Mr. Faison.
Exactly. So addition to the forty that are there, that I look forward to the different edits on, um, there are, um, three that Selectman Franco, um, proposed. First one, reading, um, to adopt appropriate regulations on the sale of so-called recreational marijuana and the siting of recreational marijuana retail establishments that address health and public safety concerns while collecting appropriate revenue and minimizing unreimbursed expenses to the town. Um, one note with that is that it's a lot of state regulations on that, so, um, I have a, we can talk about that one, just compile, working with the state.
Yeah, but there are, uh, under the current law, there are significant aspects of local control.
Sure. Yes, but, yeah. Um, the next one, to continue to evaluate the operational and financial merits of contracted services to see if the town would be better served by bringing the services in-house. Um, and then the last one, to advocate for increases in state funding in order to alleviate pressure on the town's budget, in particular, increase funding for our Chapter seventy educational aid, Chapter ninety road improvement aid, and unrestricted government aid. And tomorrow, we should get our cherry sheet, so we'll have a better idea about some of that stuff.
Um, I would add, in item twenty, talking about technology...
Okay.
Um, I would add a board point regarding pay-by-sell and making sure that's a success. Dig, dig. I, yeah, okay. Um, in item twenty-three, which is talking about Hubway, um, I would include a reference. It's, uh, it talks about to continue and ultimately expand the Hubway Regional Bike Share System in Brookline by collaborating with Motivate and the cities of Boston, Cambridge, and Somerville. I would add, and other cities that may be, uh, included as, as Hubway expands or some, say it more eloquently than I just did.
Sure.
You should say other municipalities.
Other municipalities.
Because it might be towns as well as cities.
Right.
Excuse me, I'd, I'd like to add, I'd like to add, uh, a phrase in, uh, one of the bullets under number sixteen. Can you get me?
Yes, yes, we can. Go for it.
Okay. Uh, the, the second bullet, um, I'd like to add at the end of that, um, something about, uh, pursuing, uh, the concept of net zero for the ninth school and the high school expansion, this, and other municipal projects. This is something that the Selectmen's Climate Action Committee has been working on, and we have a subcommittee specifically charged with looking into this, and, um, we're amazed that the, at the progress that has been made in this whole area, uh, in bringing the costs of the, um, efforts to get renewable energy down and the, um, savings, that operational savings that we will get. So I would like to add, uh, where it says, "To identify and pursue with the assistance of other municipal departments, energy efficiency improvement and funding opportunities for municipal buildings, comma, including but not limited to, uh, net zero, uh, efforts at, uh, schools and other municipal buildings." Something of that nature, just to get the concept of net zero into it, into these goals, and we are working on it already. Um, and, uh, it also, we are working with many other departments, um, to further this goal, and we want to, I want to make sure that people are aware of it.
Yeah, I think that language should say to work toward, because certainly that's what we're trying to do on the ninth elementary school.
Okay. Selectman Green?
I have one, uh, may have others. Uh, item twenty-five, uh, to prioritize the creation and maintenance of affordable housing while balancing other community needs and concerns, add including racial integration.
Okay.
I, I had, uh, on the, um, number two, um, talking about the CIP, um, the, um, ninth, a, a major K through eight project, I think is the ninth elementary school project, and that really should be moved up to a major project in process.
Sure.
And, uh, and I would use the, the term ninth elementary school, because that's what we're using, and take it out of planning, because we are kind of, uh, we're in feasibility, so I think we're in, in progress.
That's all. Any other, one, back to Hubway, another thought I had, integrate Hubway support as a desired amenity in zoning decisions. a desired amenity in zoning decisions. So that when developers come and ask for permission to build, that one of the things we ask for is supporting Hubway and making a financial contribution to it.
You sure?
Let me just mention that also, as Selectmen Daly mentioned about the K8 project, the high school expansion project, so we're a little behind the ninth school project, we're not schematic it, but hopefully we will be in the early part of fiscal year 18. And so, you know, I think that should also move in fiscal year 18 to the same category of continue major public projects in progress.
Okay. We can do that for Item 2.
Unless you want to add another bullet.
No, that's okay.
Can somebody tell me where the, where is the complete streets reference in here?
I'm not sure if I put a complete streets in one here this time.
Yeah, I think you should.
I'll bump one in. Okay.
If there's a transportation bullet. If there isn't, add one.
Yep, my problem. I think there was one, I'm always looking for a little variation. I can add that.
Let me add one other thing, and I just thought of it now, so it's not going to come out pretty. Item 40, to form the following Selectmen's Committees as a result of town meeting. I'd like to either there or somewhere else put something about providing support and resources to the committees as well as to the town with respect to the public records law. And the new public records law has made significant changes that are going to impose incredible burdens on the town and town committees, and we need to make sure that we have the ability to comply.
Okay. That we have the ability, we have to.
Well, it's nice to say we have to, but if we don't have the resources or, you know, training, whatever it takes.
Right, right, right.
Yep.
And the legislature didn't think about those things.
Of course, of course not.
But it didn't think about.
Okay. Any other points? This is a good list.
So we'll find it, bring it back for approval next meeting.
We will.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I declare it eight o'clock, even though it's a minute before. One of the problems with setting these public hearings up in advance, we have, we send out notices a couple of weeks in advance, and we don't always know what's coming up. And so we've noticed, actually, three public hearings for eight o'clock. I'm hoping two of them will be very fast, and the two that I'm hoping will be very fast are public hearings about grants of location. So I'm going to do those first, and then we'll go to the public hearing on 1299 Beacon Street.
Eight fifteen.
Oh, it was noticed at eight fifteen. Okay, I'm sorry. Actually, I think we noticed it for eight.
Oh, okay.
And then we indicated on the calendar, eight fifteen. So I apologize. So the first item is a public hearing on the petition of Verizon New England and N-Star Electric doing business as Eversource Energy for permission to relocate an existing jointly-owned utility pole, locate and construct such a new line of electric conduits and manholes with the necessary cables therein under the following public way, Crafts Road, to relocate jointly-owned pole approximately 305 feet northeasterly of Norfolk Road, northeasterly a distance of 15 feet, and then Crafts Road, a new electrical conduit running southwesterly from the relocated pole, approximately 290 feet northeasterly of Norfolk Road, a distance of 20 feet. Mr. Ditto.
Good evening. The reason for this request is that the pole, as it presently is located, is right in the center of the new driveway for three of the homes in the subdivision up off of Crafts Road. It has three homes on Crafts and then two homes that face Boston Street. But we have to move that pole about 15 feet down Crafts to get it out of the way of the driveway, and then in turn, put conduit back in that location to get a pickup point to deliver the electricity, and that'll be underground service to 19, 21, and 23 Crafts Road.
The conduit is only about 20 feet of diameter.
Twenty feet, right. So we do have representatives here from both Eversource and Verizon, because this is a DOL pole, there's both joint ownership on this. Notices went out in the statutory seven day period. It is a public hearing, so we're here to answer any questions.
So what's the impact on the neighborhood and above others?
During construction?
Yeah.
Yeah, if you look at the project information sheet for the grant of location, you'll see that it's pretty benign. There's no brick outside of DOL hours, there's no parking restrictions. Just a minute.
So there's no road closures, no effect on parking, no effect on resident access, and there's no, there's going to be no noise by law. How many days work?
This one for Eversource.
One day?
Okay. The pole relocation will be done by Verizon.
Any questions from the board? I see someone wishes to speak. Come on up, join the party.
Hi, I'm the House, my name is Lynn Siegel, and I live at 27 Crafts Road, and the pole will be moved from more or less the edge of my property inward, more into the middle of my property. I'm fine with that.
Okay.
However, we have underground electrical service, so that's not just the conduit to the new construction, but there's also some impact presumably on our property, which I'd like to know about, and then possibly ask follow-up question.
Okay. Would someone care to respond?
She's talking about, she, I believe, lives at 27 Crafts Road?
Right.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with what she asked for a service. However, if it is off this pole, it will be replaced as part of this work.
So that would mean that you would be cutting a new hole through our yard?
Come up to the microphone, please.
Sorry. So I don't know whether we need to take the time of everybody, but my question is, what does it mean that the service will be replaced? Does it need to, like, dig?
So I'm only guessing, but it may be that your service now is fed off the pole and its location is that now, when we move that 15 feet down the street, we'll have to move your service down with it. So if you have an underground service, we just have to hook you up at a new location.
So does that mean-
Come up to the microphone, please.
All right, all right.
You're on TV.
Does that mean that we will, you will be cutting a channel all the way to the house, or that you will be connecting the pole to where the wires are now and burying that 15 feet?
Yeah, we won't, we won't chase this back to the foundation to your house, we'll just chase it back far enough so that we can get a new line, a straight line into the new location. So that may be five feet, 10 feet, or 15.
Okay. And if, I've been told by some of the team that's working on the three houses behind us, that they've looked at our service, I don't know why they have, but they claim to have looked at it, and it's not in very good condition. Would that change your plan?
That's up to the Verizon or Eversource.
I think they're going to have to inspect that.
Yeah, it would have to be, it would have to be, I'm Renee Banks Clark from Eversource. It would definitely-
Speak into the mic.
I'm sorry. It would definitely have to be inspected. It's hard to tell without knowing exactly where her service is.
There's going to be no cost to her, in exchange, right?
Right, right. Okay, so you'll come and inspect it as part of the movement of the pole, and if something additional needs to be done, then you'll ring the doorbell as it were and talk to us?
Yes, we will notify you and let you know we need to come onto your property.
Good, okay.
Can I ask, can I ask a question? In projects such as this, is there usually an interruption in service?
There would have to be.
There would have to be, at least for a short period of time.
Possibly, yeah.
And Tomo is notified of this?
We do notify them, yes, in advance.
Any other questions, comments from the board? Therefore, I'll move that we approve the petition of Verizon New England and N-Star Electric Company doing business as Eversource Energy for permission to relocate an existing jointly-owned utility pole and locate and construct such a new line of electric conduits and manholes with the necessary cables therein under the following public way, Crafts Road, relocate a jointly-owned pole 43 slash three, approximately 305 feet northeasterly of Norfolk Road, northeasterly a distance of 15 feet, and Crafts Road, new electrical conduit running southwesterly from the relocated pole, approximately 290 feet northeasterly of Norfolk Road, a distance of 20 feet, to 19 dash 23 Crafts Road. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectmen Daly?
Aye.
Selectmen Franco?
Aye.
Selectmen Heller?
Aye.
Selectmen Green?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. We have one more public hearing on the petition of N-Star Electric for permission to construct location for such a line of conduits and manholes with the necessary cables therein under the following public way, and this is N-Star Electric. Chestnut Hill Avenue, distance of about 150 feet, southwesterly to 375 Chestnut Hill Avenue. Mr. Ditto.
Yes, so this is the new service for the project at Circle Cinema Site. And here we run a conduit, starting at the town line up Chestnut Ave. to Concrete Pad, and they'll terminate it there, and it will feed the new construction going on. This is anticipated to happen in the upcoming spring, and again, as shown on their project information, grant of location, they're not looking for any special permits to work outside of normal work.
And?
Sure.
This is also to provide service to the Marriott Hotel as well.
Okay. So this is expected duration of two weeks, all the work done during the day, no road closures, no change in parking restrictions, no issues of resident access, resident access restrictions, and no service interruptions anticipated to the surrounding area. Any questions from the board? This is a public hearing. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this project? I see none.
I assume we're going to have to have a lane closure or two to do this, so during the daytime, yes.
Okay. So I'll move that we, do what? Lost my place. Approve the petition of N-Star Electric Company doing business as Eversource Energy for permission to construct and a location for such a line of conduits and manholes with the necessary cables therein with the following, under the following public way, Chestnut Hill Avenue, a conduit, a manhole cover, manhole 9159 near the town line, a distance of about 150 feet, southeasterly to 375 Chestnut Hill Avenue. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectmen Daly?
Aye.
Selectmen Franco?
Aye.
Selectmen Heller?
Aye.
Selectmen Green?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving along, we have a public hearing on proposed 40B development at 1299 Beacon Street. It was noticed for eight o'clock, though I, we may have informed the developer that we're pushing it back to eight fifteen, because I don't see him here.
He's outside waiting for their architect.
Ah, okay. Yeah, but I'll do a little setup to get us in the right frame of mind. So this is, you'll recall, there was a prior proposal for this project, and we had a public hearing in, what, November, December, maybe it was earlier. And the project was proposed at 14 stories in the rear back towards Soul Avenue and 10 stories in the front on, front in Beacon Street. We heard from the public, we heard a lot from the public, we didn't hear any positive comments and our own feelings, too. And we put together what I thought was perhaps the strongest 40B letter that we've written in this wave, and the letter apparently had an impact at mass housing, which is good, so that I believe there was some pushback at mass housing and pressure on the developer to reduce the project. And what we have before us is a reduced version of the product, and we'll be hearing from the developer and his architect how the project has changed. But let me talk a little about what this hearing is and what this hearing isn't. This is, we have, we currently have 10 40B projects before the town in various stages of the process. So the first part of the process is the developer applies to a subsidizing agency for what's known as a project eligibility letter. And that's the phase we're in now with respect to this project. And the subsidizing agency asks the town for comments on what do we think of the project so we can take those comments into account as it determines whether it wants to subsidize the project. There are one, two, three, four, five, currently six projects before the Zoning Board of Appeals that have received project eligibility letters and applied for the next step, which is applying for a comprehensive permit. There are then one, two, three, four projects that are applying for project eligibility letters, that haven't been issued project eligibility letters yet, for a total of 10. That number is really unprecedented with any community, most communities are stretched when they have, you know, more than one 40B at a time. So we apply to the State Department of Housing and Community Development for some administrative relief. And actually, the Department of Housing and Community Development has granted us administrative relief, which is going to slow down these projects as they come in the pipeline. And the administrative relief that's granted has given us, for projects that are before the ZBA, either 30 or 60 additional days to process them. And then, new projects coming into the pipeline, one, we don't have to open- And then, new projects coming into the pipeline, one, we don't have to open a public hearing if a project hits us between now and April first. And after April first, we don't have to open a public hearing until we get the backlog down to four projects. So, but that doesn't stop projects from coming in the door. It slows it down. So, you know, the intent, I think, from DCHD, DHCD, I'll never get those initials right, was to, they really recognize that our ZBA and staff, zoning board of appeals, and staff is just overwhelmed. So the idea was to give them, to recognize the workload on them without blocking projects. Because DHCD, their goal is to have, maximize the amount of affordable housing. So they didn't want to block projects, so that's the nature of the relief. So for this project, I see quite a few familiar faces. So this is, this is the same kind of public hearing that we had on this project earlier, but we're talking about revisions to the project and just some ground rules. For this phase, you know, we're talking about the impact on the neighborhood, concerns that you might have regarding impact on your property, the impact of massing shadows, light, things like that. Where, at this stage, we're less concerned about what's happening inside. That'll come later, but we're really concerned about the impact on the neighborhood, the impact on the town. And under forty-B, forty-B provides a framework that we can comment and push back on developers. But it's very hard for a community, it's designed to be very hard for a community to just say no. And so that's one of the frustrations that we've seen. Because what forty-B does is it allows a developer to pretty much ignore our zoning. And the goal of forty-B is to create affordable housing. So the legislature, when it, when passed forty-B, said, okay, the intent was to try and defeat so-called snob zoning, aimed mainly at some of the more suburban communities than Brookline. You know, Brookline has a lot of, does a lot of the things that DHCD and the legislature want us to do. Creation of inclusionary zoning, where if you do a project more than six units, you have to make some provision for affordable housing. We have multifamily zoning. In some other communities, they don't have that kind of stuff. So it could very well be that maybe they didn't have Brookline in mind when forty-B was passed, but we're caught in the net. The one big safe harbor is when you have ten percent of your housing units in the so-called subsidized housing inventory, then a developer can't defeat our zoning unless we want them to. And there might be reasons why we might support a forty-B project. There's one right now in the pipeline, one of the tenants in the pipeline that the board of selectmen is supporting. And that's the project at, next to Cahillith Israel, being proposed by the Jewish Community Housing for the Age. That's a completely affordable project, and it's a really good project. So just a ground rule, let's have comments, let's focus the comments on the project. I really don't want to have any personal comments. There've been some other public hearings where people have started saying things about the developer and the motivations and the architect. Let's not do that, let's just talk about the project and keep it civil. So, Mr. Engler, welcome back.
Appreciate the warm gesture. For the record, Jeff Engler from SEB Affordable Housing Consultant. I'll be brief. I mean, as the board knows, we were here two, three months ago, give or take, and heard a lot of concerns about the project, both from this board and also through the planning department and as well as the neighbors to a certain extent. And went back and made modifications to the plan, which is what we're here tonight to present. So unlike other presentations where it's really the introduction, you're basically familiar. I mean, things like where this project is is not changing, the basic footprint's not changing access, although we'll talk about that. But some of the other things, massing, density, height, have changed. So without further ado, we'll turn it over to the architect. I think one of the objectives tonight is to compare a little bit what we had to what we have now. But also, obviously, we're here to answer any questions and listen. And as you correctly have stated, this is the beginning part of the process. The fortyBs that have been approved or are about to be approved by the zoning board of appeals, I can say, have changed fairly materially from the site approval application. So what you see presented tonight, should it get a project eligibility letter for mass housing, we're likely undergo some changes as it goes through the public hearing process before the zoning board of appeals. So I'll turn it over to Harrell, who can walk you through the presentation, and we're happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Harrell Pandio, Principal at CBT Architects. And we are acquainted and familiar with this process, you know, going through it on a couple of other projects. And, you know, we recognize and appreciate not only the process and the communication and the collaborative nature of everything here. And I think, as Mr. Engler is saying, it's really the beginnings of it. You know, part of this is, from our perspective, you know, we're not just the drafting hand of a developer. I think, you know, in many ways, this is really part of trying to create improvements. And I think that a little bit is in the eye to behold, I'm sure, which is a comity fair. But at the same time, I think, you know, there's an evolution that we see. We're doing work not only in Brookline and other towns and cities and neighborhoods that are very akin to this sort of, you know, use and life and energy. But I think, you know, part of it is really trying to look at it from a multifaceted approach to make sure that, you know, we're trying to really deliver solutions and be part of creating something that's wonderful, that's destination based. And ultimately, you know, whether we see it day one or you see it day five-hundred is an improvement to the overall experience of Brookline. So we all know that in the cursory beginnings, that it takes time to kind of come together and collaborate and figure that out. And I think that's what we're trying to get to here. I think part of this is, exercise is trying to understand the possibilities. And doesn't necessarily mean that where you start is where you end, but I think this is what we're really excited to talk through. So as Mr. Engler said, the location of this site has not changed, obviously at twelve-ninety-nine Beacon. And this is where the lighting store is today, there's the Trader Joe's, the post office nearby. Obviously, everyone's pretty familiar with it, with Sewell Street in the back. Obviously, it has its challenges, and we'll go through all that. Just different views of the site, different areas, this one's kind of southwest, looking back. And as we know, running east and west a little bit with Beacon, you know, a lot of the light and sun is coming from relatively behind. So, you know, a lot of the shadows, you can imagine, are really more towards us, if you will, in this photograph, more than anything else. You know, looking back at it from a vernacular or a series of evolving vernacular, I think part of it is understanding all the different types of architecture that present itself in Brookline today. You can go from stuff closer to the city to stuff closer to Newton and thereabouts, and really try to get an understanding of how the larger, more, larger housing buildings kind of are and their sort of vocabulary and the sort of pieces that make it up. And we're really sort of enamored by the bay widths and the bay, and the bay analysis of whether it's a protruding bay, or it's really just the division, or the nature of the repetition, or the spacing of the bays, with sort of a more modern interpretation of where some of the more classic architectural pieces were in and around the area. So, you know, this is more of an inspiration board of precedence. This is not to say that this is going to look like any one of these, but, you know, typically in our field, it's something that we kind of try to draw from and try to create comparisons and similarities to, and where the frontier, if you will, on some of this design can go. You know, obviously, the debate is, can also be centered around some of the height. Previously, we were, you know, looking at something taller, and I think taller in the sense that, you know, there's definitely some examples not far away from the building site that are demonstrative of height. And, you know, we were previously, I think, right around that one-sixty mark, just like the building a few blocks away. More closer to the site, there's a building at one-hundred-and-forty-three feet. And, you know, there's plenty of examples in and around the area that are tall buildings. And I don't think tall is bad. I think, you know, it's about creating density and more folks on the sidewalks and shopping and that vibrancy, so I think that's really a part of it. And, you know, these developments were done, as you know, decades ago. But, you know, part of that is trying to draw from the examples that were created in the past. So this is where we were. You know, we were hovering around, God, I wish I could read that that well, but this was around a hundred-and-sixty-some odd feet before. And I'll explain some of the architecture behind it. This is sort of a two-stage thing, where it's hard to see in this particular elevation, but when we go to the side view, you'll see that it was lower or stepped down, if you will, towards Beacon and then kind of raised or stepped up, if you will, to a more higher height in the back. So since then, we've dropped the building pretty significantly down to a hundred-and-twenty-two feet. And a hundred-and-twenty-two is kind of less than the other two buildings that are not far away from the site as it is today, actually far less from the one-sixty and, you know, even more so from the one-forty-three that you saw in the other building that's a block away. So this is really, you know, the retail level, I don't know if I can point with this, but I will try. There it is. The magic hand, oops, I know I did something there. So essentially, this is that retail height here. So this is really representing sort of a nice tall retail expression that if you look at some of the datum lines, is pretty much in keeping with a lot of the height scale and form that's in the area. Now, you know, sort of imagining forward or looking forward to a more cleaner glass line, you know, this is kind of where we're seeing things go as far as retailers that want to come in and really try to create a visible presence, you know, still, again, keeping in mind the modules that are existing in the neighborhood as far as millions and whatnot. But, you know, that height of around twenty-five or thirty feet, which is really sort of what's that, this datum line, is what's forward most on Beacon Street. And then as you step back a little bit, you get this mass, which kind of comes up to about here. And then going even further back in the page is this sort of other mass that's back there, which I guess, for all intents, for this page pushes into the page, which you'll see in a side elevation in a minute. So there's your new building. The dash line represented, obviously, where we were. So this is where we were for the west elevation. And you can kind of see that, you know, again, the Beacon Street on your left over here, and then the first retail step, and it steps up to the shorter, and then steps up again to the taller. And that was where we were. And then we've brought it down again to the taller, the one-twenty-two, and it steps even lower here to a hundred, I think if I'm reading that correctly, which is right at that corner. So, you know, substantively, an improvement. In fact, I think our rough calculations are showing at a twenty-five percent less overall building from where we were earlier, which is a pretty significant reduction. And then here's the east elevation, again, similar concept of the where we were, the bays and the sort of subtlety of the transitioning of the architecture of the bays, and then it coming down, again, from the higher point being at one-twenty-two. Again, the before, and then the shortened after. So, you know, the intent and the attempt here is really sort of, you know, listening to the feedback that we got last time and trying to amicably come up with a way of finding an in-between where I think this seems to work well from unit counts and layout from our perspective, as well as still being responsive to context, not only from a retail perspective, which is the immediate context, but the other taller buildings that are, that it might be a block or two or three blocks away, that are more responding to the height. That's there actually less, if you will, than those. So this was the before of sort of a view from across the street. And then this is what we would remove, and then that's sort of representative of the after, if you will. Now, again, just like, you know, Mr. Engler was saying, this is the devil's in the details, and we'd want to get into further examining heights and the subtleties of materiality. And we want to, you know, sort of stay true to the terracotta, warm tones that are already present all over. You know, there's limestone tones, there's definitely storefront materiality, there's metal where you can, where you see it in many, in many areas. So this is really trying to find a way to create some new forms and bring those materials together to create a very light, bright, and robust experience at the corner, pretty signature piece in the area. Jumping into the plans, so we have now come to a single floor, essentially a parking of ninety-three spots below grade and then the six spots above grade, which total for a total of ninety-nine overall for the building. These are through stackers. And so you can see over here that there would be, where the concept of the car elevator is still there, run through valet, and an operator who would manage not only the surface parking for the, parking for retail, but also for residents as well. We've done a fair amount of due diligence for this type of parking concept in other projects, and have gotten pretty good information from not only parking consultants and operators and whatnot, but, you know, we see these types of systems in the city, although a lot of folks can argue that it's not as relevant. But, you know, when you live there and you want your car quick, that concept kind of carries true no matter where you live. And, you know, we've kind of really come to understand that, you know, how the likelihood of these wait times and whatnot, and they're very, they're very good. Here's the ground plane. So on the left is essentially the Beacon Street entrance, and you'd get a car.
I'm sorry, could you just repeat what the wait times are going to be for a car?
So we haven't figured it out for this particular project yet. I'm just saying, I went by historical data for previous projects that we've looked at, and they can range anywhere from three to five minutes. It's just depending on, depending on time of day, depending on the operator, depending on the quantity of cars that are moving at once. So that would be, when you get through the process of going through the rest of this, you know, thing with the forty-B, that's, I'm sure, part and parcel of understanding it. So in this sort of plan north, if you will, this is the arrival for the residential part of the lobby. So you'd come in here, and you have your elevator, your stairs to kind of go up, which would be over here. Sorry, the mouse is moving slow. And this is the residential lobby, you'd have your, you know, some mechanical, essentially some things there. So you'd also be able to access this from the parking sides, you'd be able to come up and come into the same lobby. And then this is the lower retail area here, this could be two stories, what we're imagining right now, valet office, and like I said before, the surface parking, which is set back from Sewell. And then as we make our way up, this is the second story, we'd have some common area amenity space for residents, we'd have retail space towards the Beacon Street side. And, you know, this is sort of flexible space, depending on how we want, ultimately see this thing being programmed. That would work really well to not only, maybe there's some community opportunities here, but there's definitely some residential amenity opportunities as well. And then as you move up to the third floor, now, if you remember, this is sort of small and a big component, but at a few levels, they're the same level. So there's ten units on those per level. And then as you get up to the higher tower component, you know, you get essentially seven units. So in all, when you tally all the units together, you're around seventy-four, so a pretty substantive reduction from where we were. And the red line, again, represents where we were on the height, the current section represents where we are.
How many affordable?
Do you know the exact count?
Twenty percent.
Fourteen, fifteen?
It says here sixteen.
Says here sixteen.
And we lost a level of parking, so that dash line below actually indicates losing additional parking that we had before. Again, the reduction in height, um, overall.
Sixteen.
Okay. This is more of an overall site plan, so it kind of shows some of the sidewalk conditions and, and kind of where the ins and outs are for some parking islands and whatnot, but how it sort of sits against its neighbors and, and, um, is it, you know, adjacent, and the adjacencies. So this...
Okay, just go back to that one a second. So you're looking at two curb cuts back to Sewell?
So the idea here is that you'd be able to sort of manage car flow a little bit easier if there was an in and an out, um, so people aren't backing, um, was the hope. And especially when, when we're dealing with loading, we can make a quick turn, back in and then pull out forward. So recognizing the, the stress that Sewell has on it as it is, we're trying to sort of pull off that stuff so it's not right up against the property line and inset it some. So there's a little bit more relief, um, to handle cars and turning and all that sort of stuff on site before we actually, um, interact with Sewell.
And, and do you see any queuing into the street with this setup?
I don't think so because I don't think the, uh, we're not imagining from what I understand that type of retail where you'd have that level of traffic, um, you know, into it.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, so it just, again, it depends on the retailer. So, you know, it's, it depends on who, what kind of retail that's going to really be at the end of the day. And that'll pretty much determine sort of, you know, traffic per minute, people per hour, that sort, those sort of statistics to determine how many cars come in and out.
What type of retail are you thinking of putting in there?
Yeah, so I mean, the sense is that we'd probably go back, um, to having Nina's be there. So that's, you know, when you look at a lighting, lighting showroom or a furniture company or those types of retailers, there's, they're not high traffic like a restaurant, they're not high traffic, you know, somebody who's in there is in there for a while. Um, they're not, you know, they're there to shop for something intentionally, not just casual browse and walk in and walk out with a thousand dollar lamp. So it's usually, it's one of those things where your traffic and your, your, um, pace of entering and exit or cars per minute or whatever you want to, with the actual status from a parking consultant would be decreased pretty substantively. And then this is sort of the cheat sheet, for lack of a better word, just to kind of see where all the reductions have really kind of happened, um, across the board. So, you know, this is, um, we've taken two to four stories off. We've lost 43 feet overall. We've reduced parking substantively. We've lost units substantively. Um, and I think that's really, um, sort of the takeaway from before and after to kind of where we've arrived to, so. And then that's sort of the reduced view.
So what's the comparative parking ratio before and after?
We were, um, ba-ba-ba-ba-ba-ba-ba-ba-ba. We've lost 85 spots from the 99. So we were 99 plus 85 before, one eighty-four, is that right math-wise? And, um, so we lost a whole level of parking, so we've lost 85 spots.
And reduced, uh, twenty, 25 units?
Thirty-four units.
Thirty. Questions from the board? I'm, I'm just, I'm, I have a cold, so I'm not feeling too good. So I'm not going to be as active as perhaps I normally am.
I have a couple of, so we had a complaint, uh, the last time, there was a neighbor, um, neighboring building that you were going to block their emergency egress from their building. Is that still an issue?
Not that I'm aware of, you know?
You have to talk to the, into the microphone.
Raj Thandadavala. Uh, so the question is regarding, uh, access, emergency access for, uh, I think it's 1295 to 97.
It was a yoga studio, I can't remember.
So this, this issue was litigated about five or six years ago. I had to understand what our rights were, had it investigated. And we determined that the, uh, 1295, 97 had no easement, had no right to exit from there. And we wanted to go one step further. I wanted to, uh, literally, physically establish that. So I applied for a fence, uh, chain link fence, nothing, and applied to building department. And they looked at all the matters and they gave us the permit because we had a right to block. Now, it isn't that I want to block them, to correct me wrong, but we wanted to establish what our rights were. And that building, and so anyways, finishing up on that. So the face, fence was installed and with the involvement of the fire department, uh, there's a sign on the inner side of the fence that says it is not an egress. The building, uh, that we are talking about, uh, this is when Boston Private Bank wanted to come in as a tenant. So they went to the building department and asked for a building permit. And they only had one means of egress. So the building department then ruled that if they put sprinklers in the building, then they would be compliant with, uh, having one exit. So at the end of the day, uh, there is no right of occupants or pri, owner of that building to have an egress on to, uh, 1299 lot. It's conceivable that somehow we'll figure out that, uh, we might, and I emphasize the word, I don't want anybody to take this home and said, okay, this establishes that we are going to do it. It might work out that we'll be able to give them an egress into somehow into the first floor and then out, but there's no requirement and we are completely compliant. And as I said, this issue was litigated about five, six years ago. And I'm sure you can go to the building department and see all the documentation.
Okay. Um, I, I have some questions for the architect, I believe, about the, um, the system for, um, parking the cars.
Sure.
Now, we've heard that in Boston where they have some of these lifts for car parking that, um, people have complained that they're very noisy. And have you investigated different types of systems and, uh, as, as to noise level and?
So there's, there's a few things, I guess, attributed to that. One is, um, routine maintenance. There is the, uh, sort of advancement of technology depending on how old the systems that you might be referring to are. There is, um, sort of where the systems are located as far as where they're heard from, you know, residents. This is two levels below, if not three levels below where the residential units are. So the separation for noise, if any, is probably going to be pretty minimal. Um, there's those no vibration as a lot of these things are installed in isolators, uh, vibration isolation. Um, so that's pretty common. And, um, at the end of the day, um, it's not, it's not like, if you were to kind of see it or picture in the movies, it's not like you hit this crank and all of a sudden it's like, boop, you know, starts. So there, it's, it's like an elevator. So it's, it's, it's supposed to be as quiet, if not, you know, uh, in that realm of being an elevator.
And did you say there were going to be several? Was there just two?
That, that question was raised, there's another project proposed at 455 Harvard Street that has a similar system. And, um, the decibel level on the lift is equivalent to the operation of a dishwasher in terms of the noise, what you hear.
So I, I think, uh, my concern is, so if you've got 90 some cars coming in and out of there and one of the lifts breaks down, which, you know, occasionally they're going to break down, um, what does, I mean, we, we heard from a lot of people about Sewell already being, um, very crowded. Um, we, we have a letter, I think, tonight from the synagogue that's nearby about children walking to their, their programs at the synagogue. Um, so what, what happens when, uh, one of your units breaks down?
So just like any elevator, that would either be, uh, pedestrian elevator or freight elevator or whatnot, we've already built in redundancy because there's two. Um, the likelihood of both going down in our experience of seeing these go into multiple buildings that we've seen is rare to none. Um, they do go down only for maintenance, which means you want to maintain them anyway, so that's part of that process.
So say there's a power outage?
Yeah, there's usually backup for it. There's backup power.
Okay. Um, but the, I, I think you said something about six parking spaces.
Surface.
On the service.
Yep.
So are those parking spaces there so that people who want their car to be valeted down to the lower level can leave their car there and rather than backing out onto the street?
Yeah, so I think what we've heard and seen as examples from other projects and I've heard from many folks like VPNE and other folks that actually operate these types of, uh, systems and are the valets themselves, you know, they, it's always beneficial. Not every project gets the benefit of having as much surface area to be able to actually handle any kind of backup if there were. They're usually very fast. There's usually somebody at the bottom moving the cars. There's usually somebody at the top taking the cars in and they're, they manage it pretty fast, even when it's, uh, your peak hours. So, and they're very well at that process. So worst case scenarios, if it's before the retail shop opens, if the shop opens at 10 and everyone's going to work at 9, everyone's coming back at 5 and the shop closes at 7, I mean, there's ways to mitigate that. In, in addition to all that, you also have the awareness like any other sort of concierge you would have in a residential building. Mrs. Smith was, leaves at a certain time, she goes to work, she comes back. There's that, there's that frequency and then there's folks that don't drive as often that would have their cars probably parked there for long periods of time, let's say, except on weekends when maybe the demands are less. So part of it is getting the understanding of the building, its use and operation and how frequently, um, those spots are interchanged. But to answer your first question, as these things are maintained or if they break down, it's like simply no different than calling in your elevator repair service when the elevator goes down. Those contracts are typically in place and those folks are on call. So the experiencing of any super lengthy downtimes minus any massive parts that are in delay would probably be minimal.
Yeah, I have two, I have two questions. First one, I think you've addressed some of the underlying concerns, but I'll ask it still if I'm interested. Um, is retail an essential component of the finances of this project?
I'm going to defer. I'm sorry. Is retail essential for the finances of this project?
Uh, yes.
You have to go. Microphone.
Sorry. Or should I have a wireless?
No, we need to be, you're on TV.
Uh, yes, very much so. Very much so. Um, I also don't think any alternative, uh, use of it would work. By that I mean, suddenly I don't think folks would want to live on the first floor as an apartment or something like that. And, uh, and yes.
Related to that is, is Nina's, uh, do you have a, an agreement that they would move in or are you just speculating about that?
He's the owners.
Okay. Sorry. Never mind. My other question, uh, what level of rents are you planning for the market rate units?
I'm sorry?
What rental rates are you planning for the market rate units?
Uh, we had a study done. I'm going to, and I'm speaking from memory. Uh, I'm going to say one, one bedroom will probably be, uh, high 2,000, 3,000-ish. Uh, two bedrooms would be in 3,500, 3,600, uh, of that order of magnitude.
Yeah, you're close. We had in our budget 20, about 2,700 for the one and 3440 for the two bedroom.
I do want to comment that, uh, the finishes in these apartments, uh, would be, uh, five-star level. I did a building in Cambridge and that would be an example of the type of finishes we, we will have, absolutely the top of the line.
Sir, I'm a Franco.
Uh, I, I have three questions for you.
Age. It's age restricted, right?
Yes. It's age restricted, correct.
The apartments.
So older children? Older people that pay 35,000 dollars?
Well, it's 55 plus, right? Yeah. Older's relative.
All right, so I have three questions for you. Uh, we've talked a lot about the, uh, the parking, uh, for the building and the lifts. I want to drill in for a second on the loading dock.
Sure.
Uh, is that going to be reserved for the retail or is it for use of everybody in the building?
Everybody in the building.
And how is that going to work? I mean, I assume that with, uh, 74 units, there's going to be UPS deliveries and somebody's going to need a new dishwasher and there's going to be people coming and going. Is there going to be an exclusive direction that the loading area is for those types of activities or are you going to anticipate that the UPS truck is going to pull up on Sewell Avenue, double park, run in? How is that going to be managed?
So here's, uh, my thinking on loading, unloading, uh, trash removal. Um, I'm sure you're familiar with what happens at Trader Joe's every night. Uh, we intend to use same idea, share some of the same space. We intend to have our loading, unloading, trash removal at night and, uh, much the same way as Trader Joe's does, we intend to do the same.
So you're aware that there are restrictions on when trash can be collected? We have a local bylaw, I believe, that says there's only certain hours that trash collection can occur between.
Yes, yes. Very much.
Um, second question is about, uh, the venting for the, uh, the garage. I assume that it's going to, there's going to be some sort of mechanical fan. Uh, is that going to be on the roof? Is it going to be on the first floor near the, uh, the stackers? What's the, the plan?
Yeah, I think, you know, it's, it's early to tell you the exact location. Obviously there is a lot of, uh, codes and regulations that stipulate where it can exhaust and where it can be. And at this point, all I can say is we probably be, we'd be code compliant.
Okay. Um, we have a noise bylaw, so just take that into account.
Yep, and there's things that you can do to silence and do things along the way.
Um, and then, uh, I assume you've done some exploration about the subservice conditions, you know, if there's ledge there, if there's sandy soil. Uh, I'm wondering if you're requiring blasting or you're anticipating having to draw pipelines or anything to provide structural support?
We are, we haven't done a geotech study on this site, uh, but, uh, based on, uh, 1309 and also at 11 Longwood, uh, there's been no evidence of any ledge in that locale. Uh, it would be highly unlikely that we'd find ledge there, uh, although we haven't done a geotech, uh, so.
So what's the plan if you do have to blast or you find that the, the soil isn't, uh, of a material that would support a building of this, of this mass?
Well, at this point, as I said, we really don't anticipate that. We don't have an answer to that question, but no doubt during the, uh, ZBA hearings, we will be investigating that and answer that.
But presumably you'd have to make alterations to the building in order to make up for the cost of whatever was required.
Right. I, I could also tell you that 1285, which is next to the post office, I remember when it was, it was dug up and built, there's no ledge. Uh, so I don't know, anybody has any evidence that there is ledge in that sort of block. I think there isn't. I think there isn't, but, you know, I can't be sure.
I mean, you're a hundred percent right. It's at the applicant's risk to move forward with the plan and not have an understanding of the subsurface conditions. One of two things would happen, they would have to put in a very expensive foundation system that could support the load, or they would have to change the building to reconcile to what can be supported. With that said, based on other buildings in the immediate area, and what is known, and there's subsurface parking nearby, it would be, as my client said, a huge surprise to find something unusual, but that's not to say it couldn't happen. Any other questions from the board? Selectman Heller, are you still with us? Would you like to ask any questions?
I am still with you. I do, it's hard for me because I cannot see the slides that the developers have shown since I don't get the patient right now, but I'm wondering, it looks almost as if he's wanting to develop two buildings, one in front of the other, and I'm still concerned about the massing of that building. It looks pretty big, considering surrounding neighborhood. And I'm wondering, is that accurate? Is this picture that I'm seeing, twelve ninety-nine beacon, that it looks as if it's like two buildings, one in front of the other?
Well, it's two segments. The front part is lower than the back part, but it's one building.
Well, it's not any lower, it's narrow, is it not?
Well, it's, yeah, it's, yeah. Yeah, then, yeah, it gets wider in the back. That's just the nature of the building.
Right.
Okay.
Still, you know, this is project clearly, cutting down four floors is clearly much better than the project before. The problem is, the project before was pretty horrible, and so, you know, now they've made something that's pretty horrible a less horrible. But still, it's pretty big and massive, and I believe that it really overwhelms that neighborhood, so I'm still very concerned about that.
Okay. Um, how many, I just want to get a sense of the room. How many people would like to speak? I see about fifteen. So, I'm going to suggest we try to keep it to about three minutes each. We can, so if we go about three minutes each, fifteen, that's about forty-five minutes. What I would suggest, and I probably said this the last time, that if somebody has made the point that you're going to make, it's perfectly okay to say, "I agree with so-and-so on that point," and then make another point, and it might be a better, more efficient use of your time. So, um...
Can I ask one more question? I'd like to give you the opportunity to address a question that, you know, has come up in the past, and that is, you know, what I'd call congestion on Sewell. I mean, discuss a few things you're going to mitigate that problem, but I don't really get a good answer to, you know, how you're going to be able to reduce the congestion that this project would cause. I mean, I don't think it's any secret that Sewell has, is plagued by problems now, and clearly is part of the zoning board process, and this relates to parking too, and I can speak to this because I've been involved in many of the other fortyBs, recent, pending, and otherwise. The town has good pure-view traffic and parking consultants to look at that, we have a good traffic consultant as well. I would say under forty-B, it's not our responsibility to solve existing issues. We can't make them any worse, and that's the law. And to the extent that we can offer mitigation improvements, I'm sure we certainly will volunteer as much. But from our understanding, and based on our preliminary analysis, a lot of the issues are well down to, you know, enforcement by the town and some of our neighbors, to public-sector neighbors, shall we say, you know, taking a liberal approach to what they're allowed to do relative to their parking. So, that's a vague answer to a good question in terms of, but at this point, we don't have a specific mitigation per se on how existing issues will be addressed. We're aware that there are problems, and we will do everything we can to improve the situation, but it would be a misrepresentation for us to say, "Yeah, after our project, if we do A, B, C, and D, the situation on Sewell is going to be a thousand times better and go away." It's not, so.
On the same subject, what I want to say is, I have spent almost thirty years either being a business owner at the Trader Joe's building, or in the building I'm in, and I can tell you that enforcement on that street is incredibly poor. There are, every single day, five to eight cars that are parked all day. Mostly, these are private cars of post office employees, and I've personally had conversations with police department, and with the folks who give out the tickets, and they've told me, straight on my face, "We will not ticket them." To which I've said, "Oh, is it the nursing important person? Can she park here, or she park here? What about a teacher? What about some other folks who do all kinds of important work for the community?" And in last April, signs were posted that in five to ten AM in the morning, and three to six in the afternoon, there's thirty-minute parking. Now, I don't have this to share with you today, but I will have at some ZBA meeting. I'm having one of my employees, every thirty minutes, record every car that is parked there, and you will be shocked. Or maybe you won't be, because you know it. So, I ask you folks, and anybody here who cares about parking and traffic, call the city hall, a town hall, make that happen, make the enforcement happen. That may not solve your problem, but...
Okay, we'd like to hear from some of the other people.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Janet Schwartz, I live on the corner of Charles and Seawall, so this is directly, and I think I know more about the traffic pattern of that corner than anybody else in this room. Just this evening, it was a total mess. The mail trucks do park there. Not only the mail, the employees park, but the mail trucks park. We have worked very hard to get them to go, and we've been told they can't. I want to thank the architect for drawing the comparisons to those other buildings. I would also like you to know that each of those buildings are set back from, in the sidewalk, and they all have very large, open spaces near them. This project does not have them, so therefore, I don't think any of those buildings should be compared. I request, I don't know if this is, I'm allowed to, but I would request a traffic study Charles Street, as you know, is one way up to the garage, and then, two ways, and then it becomes one way. I have seen people drive right through and ignore all of those signs at a very, so. I'd like to say that I saw a sign in your store the other day, it says, "Buy local." Well, we are local. This is local. But most of all, another point I want to make is that the retail, somebody asked about who's going to go in there, the place where now is the, I think BI Deaconess has that, I call it Doc in the Box, it's probably something else, that space has never succeeded in a retail. Never. Even with the underground parking, we had the meat store, help me, folks. Staples was there. Everybody left because it doesn't succeed. And I don't know why, I think it's because of, because they don't have to walk there, and it's a little bit further from Coolidge Corner. And lastly, I am really concerned about the congestion happening. People move in, we have other buildings, people, there's always moving trucks there, they're always keeping the area, you can't park here because somebody's moving or something is being done, always. I mean, I would say, easily once or twice a month that happens. The kids get out of religious school, at the same time, the trucks are coming back from the mail, from, the mail trucks are coming back. We have asked that the mail trucks not park there. It doesn't work. We, I mean, we're talking about five years we've been asking for this. So, anything else on my list here? I think that's it. But there's a lot, and the unloading is a huge concern. As far as I know, people cannot get furniture delivered at ten o'clock at night, which is what, when Trader Joe's does their unloading, so that totally is a facetious argument.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. Ramesh Shiddasani from fifty-one Sewell, and that's the small Victorian home that is directly across from the property on Sewell Avenue, which is a narrow, one-way street that is already taxed to the limits with everything today, even if the parking issues that Mr. DeHanda referred to at length are solved. And I wanted to thank Mr. Engler for reminding us that although they have no responsibility, legal or moral, to fix problems that already exist, they are required not to make current problems any worse, and it is impossible to imagine how a unit, how a building of this size and scale, with ninety-nine parking spots, seventy-four units, and several retail outlets, will not make what is already a serious and dangerous problem substantially worse. So I'll give you just a handful of examples to illustrate what I'm talking about. We already know from multiple previous people speaking in this forum, or writing letters about this project and in related terms, that there's already a significant congestion problem on Sewell Avenue, with frequent backups onto Longwood Avenue, especially during rush hour, or during times of grocery shopping, et cetera. It's not uncommon for emergency vehicles to be blocked, and for police to show up there to move traffic away in order to allow emergency vehicles to proceed. This is a street where, because there are essential services, a post office and grocery store in the area, many of the pedestrians are elderly, or come in wheelchairs, there are families with kids and strollers continually walking that area, and additional traffic of this scale on that street is simply untenable. Secondly, with respect to the underground parking, it's very difficult to imagine how, even with the most efficient system, when you've got elevators and stacks a floor below, how almost any volume of traffic will not lead to some backup on Sewell Street, Sewell Avenue, at the same time that postal trucks are coming and going, or loading and unloading. Imagine now, with a fifty-five-plus building, I can only imagine that the average time for someone to get in and out of a car, especially if they have a wheelchair, or a walker, or other things, is going to be two to three times longer than the calculations would do in a building in downtown Boston with corporate kind of traffic. So, we're dealing with a situation where there's going to be handicapped people, there's going to be ambulances, there's going to be the ride, the lift. All of those things would simply tax Sewell Avenue in a way that it just cannot possibly tolerate. We haven't even begun to think about the deliveries. Selectman Franco pointed out UPS, FedEx, et cetera, just for the residents, but all that retail, all the deliveries, there's a very nice loading zone design, which requires trucks to back up. That backing up will require the trucks to come into my driveway. There's no other way on that street for anyone to back up into that loading zone without coming onto a sidewalk or a driveway, any truck that's more than twelve feet long.
Okay, thank you.
No plan has been placed on where the trash would be stored during the day, where's the dumpster for seventy-four units in retail, and how can you have trash collection at night on a residential street? And finally, we haven't even begun to talk about how all these problems are amplified significantly with even four to six inches of snail on the ground, which happens several times a year. So I'll leave it at that, and thank you.
Hello, I'm Nancy Doyle, and forgive me for getting this, but I want to make sure I don't leave anything out. As an original resident and trustee of eleven Longwood since two thousand and two, I have personally observed nearly fifteen years of traffic situations. Construction of a building of this magnitude on this site is a health and safety issue. Longwood Avenue is a main thoroughfare for ambulances to and from five major hospitals. Trader Joe's worked with the town and neighbors to alleviate congestion by eliminating parking on the west side of Longwood to allow two lanes of southbound traffic, creating a left-turn-only lane into Trader Joe's parking lot. The proposed number of parking spots in this proposal will quadruple the number of cars making left-hand turns as the majority of traffic is southbound on Harvard Street. Often, trucks illegally use this right-hand lane to make deliveries, bringing the traffic flow to halt. The current traffic flow on Sewell, south of Longwood, is a logistical nightmare at best. It is a one-way street leading into a partial one-way street, which then leads into a two-way street with a stoplight intersecting Beacon Street. And I haven't even mentioned the adjacent post office with all its trucks and employees who already lack adequate parking. This project is totally inappropriate on many levels for the intended location, and I do not feel, having looked at the empty Walgreens spot for over a year, that there is a need for more retail space in Coolidge Corner. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Nora Abrahamer, and I'm president of Temple Sinai. I'm here with about five other people from our board of directors. We are, I'd like to start out in a more affirmative note, saying that we are very much in favor of affordable housing, and we think that's a wonderful, an important goal. However, fifteen apartments out of seventy-five, which may be the right percentage required, is not enough, in our minds, to warrant the amount of stress and danger, really, that will result on Sewell Avenue. We're on Sewell Ave, and all of the parking, and deliveries, and duck, duck loading and unloading, all will happen on Sewell Ave. And that is, as somebody has said very articulately, I'm sorry, missed your name, it is already a very, very difficult street to navigate on an everyday basis, but if, God forbid, there was a fire, and a fire truck had to come through, ambulances, whatever, it would be unpassable, and, you know, the safety would not be taken care of. At Sinai, we have three hundred and thirty households that are members, we have about a hundred and sixty students in our religious school, we have other children coming to different programs that use our building, so there are a lot of people of all ages whose safety is at risk because of this, the traffic problem, the congestion, and potential accidents. traffic problem, the congestion, and potential accidents or whatever. So, as much as we would like to support the affordable housing issue, we feel that this is just not the right location for this kind of a building. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm sorry, did you, did you say how many kids you have coming to your programs? We have 160 kids in the religious school and then several other programs, and I don't know how many kids are in attendance there. There's a drama program, there's an Asian school in the summer, there's another kind of little school that happens, and I don't unfortunately know the exact numbers.
Thank you.
Good evening. Kyle Spellman, co-owner of 1309 and 1319 Beacon, Trader Joe's and Bank of America. I just have really two main points. First, I understand the push to reach 10% affordable housing, but my question is, at what cost? Coolidge Corner is a special place with tremendous character. This proposed project seeks to take advantage of a loophole with zero regard for the charm of Coolidge Corner. You hear a lot about how much the building has been reduced, but we all know it's just going from a double XL to an XL. My second point is, I don't see how nearly 12,000 square feet of retail can be slipped into this project with virtually no surface parking. We know better than anyone that the retail tenants need surface parking to function. To think that you can employ 12,000 square feet of retail with walking and public transportation is just naive. You brought up an issue with the post office employees parking on Sewell, yet you claim those same people won't need parking at 1299. That's all.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Yudal Gilbert. I'm the vice president at Temple Sinai. I just wanted to make one, I want to reiterate some of the points that we made earlier in terms of the traffic and the safety. A couple of points, you know, there wasn't much discussion about the retail, who's going to be in there, but there's really, we don't really know what type of financing is going to be there, what kind of traffic is going to be required in terms of foot traffic and the parking needs. And I think that is, I think, a risk factor because with so much space, there could be a lot of parking requirements. We don't know how many spots are allocated for residents versus for retail, and that would be an indication of what would be expected for retail. Is that really sufficient? We don't have a plan for construction, what's going to happen to the street. The street's going to be shut off during the construction period. Even though there's no legal obligation to mitigate the parking and the traffic situation, it's only going to get worse because the post office trucks are still going to continue to park there. It's an enforcement issue, but it's been a problematic enforcement issue for a long time. I don't think the problem's going to go away when this building is put up. The mitigation issue's just going to get worse. It's not going to be mitigated. Right now Trader Joe's is using parking in the adjacent parking lot that is behind Nina's. That parking will go away, so it'll be even more of a parking crunch on Trader Joe's. And I don't know how that's going to be addressed. So I think overall, the mass of the building and the size is really completely out of scale for the neighborhood and especially for Sewell Avenue. And I think I would ask the board to seriously reconsider this project for those reasons. Thank you.
I just want to explain, the reason you're here tonight is we write a letter to the state agency expressing our concerns. We don't get to, we're not approving the project. That is up to the state agency and, and that it's, we have on many of these projects expressed serious concerns, and they often approve them anyway. And then it goes before our zoning board of appeals, and all of you need to come to the zoning board of appeals and reiterate these concerns. So this board, it's, we're not trying to, you know, give anyone license to move forward. We wish we had the authority to say no. We have very limited authority on this. We write a letter to the state. If you have sent us letters, we will attach them and send them along to the state. And, and the state initially heard concerns on this and did, did express some concerns and hence were here with a smaller project than was, what was originally proposed. But I just want to make it clear that, you know, we appreciate you coming, we will try to incorporate your concerns into our letter, but, but we don't actually have the authority to say no to a 40B project.
Understood.
Yes.
Well, the zoning board of appeals would...
Right. Yeah, and that always happens. Yeah, that always happens.
Good evening. My name is Roberta Sidney. I also represent the ownership of the building that has been mentioned a lot, the Trader Joe's building, as well as the bank building next door. Can you hear me? Okay. I just want to make sure the mic's working. I don't want to reiterate what's been said. I thought Ramesh did a great job. I think also the president of the shul did a, did a wonderful job explaining some of the things. But I would like to point out a few things that haven't yet been mentioned. One is that the proponent, Mr. De Honda, talked before about not having to make any accommodations for the building at 1295, 1297 Beacon. I believe that to be an incorrect statement, and I believe that there's a building code violation there, and I believe also that the owner of that building is pursuing that right now with the building department and the fire department. So I do think that's something that the selectmen, I would respectfully request that the selectmen point that out to the state, that it's something that hasn't yet been, been addressed, and it seems clear that he believes that, he, Mr. De Honda believes, that he does not have to address it. The second thing I would point out, and someone did ask this question before about the ratio of cars, and I think cars are the problem here, so I do have some suggestions on that. But the ratio has gone from 1.7 to 1.3. The math is easy to do. And therefore, even though there's a reduction overall in number of units, there's also a more than enough, more, I can't even say it well, reduction in the per-unit count of cars. And this means there would be zero for the retail. I'm not even using any of the retail space for the cars. My suggestion is that if this, if the board of selectmen would, would entertain it, would be to request that the state issue appeal, because I do believe affordable housing is good, and I do think we should have affordable housing in the center of Coolidge Corner. I think that's an excellent idea. But I don't think there should be any parking whatsoever. I think we should get rid of all of the cars, all of the stackers, all of the noise or smoke or smell or any of the other issues that the cars would create. It's an ideal location for Zipcar, for Lyft, for Uber. I was here earlier when some people were being interviewed for the transportation board. I think, again, 55-plus, I qualify. I can tell you, my car is two and a half years old. I have 20, I have 9,300 miles on it, because I do take advantage of walking and rideshare. So I think that this would be an ideal opportunity to optimize for that and to let everybody know, when you move into this building, don't bring a car. Make other arrangements. The second is, I think, the second point I would make is about this, this retail question. There are many retailers in Coolidge Corner who've been grandfathered. I'm thinking of Bruegger's Bakery or Mike's Deli. They don't have any parking. So they and their patrons, their employees must find parking on the streets, come by alternate means. That's not the case of this building here at 1299 Beacon. There's a surface lot today that services the retail, that is full, and that Mr. De Honda's business, Nina's Lighting, which I happen to know quite well since he used to be our tenant, and I know his sales are quite good, which means that people are coming there and people are shopping there and people are working there. So my suggestion is that there needs to be surface retail, surface parking to support surface retail. And if there isn't going to be surface parking to support the retail, then my request, again, to you would be to ask the state to remove the retail. And to Mr. De Honda's point that no one would like to live on the first floor, that's perhaps a good, a good point. He could take all of his tenant amenities from the second floor, which the architect showed us, put them all on the first floor, they fit there nicely, and he could use his second floor for additional residential, which would more than offset the cost of building an underground parking garage, which is considerable, as well as the cost of losing the retail. So those are my points and suggestions and...
Okay. Thank you.
My name is Elizabeth Shaw, and I live at 1264 Beacon Street. So it's across the street from, from this site. You actually answered, because I actually had a question rather than, per se, a specific comment, which is, what is the obligation of the town to accept and approve this 40B project? And I'm not, I can't remember your name, but you answered that.
Spellman Daley.
Well, when, so say the state agency gives them, they say, we'll approve this and give you a subsidy. It then goes to our zoning board of appeals, who can work with them on, on some of the issues. But essentially, the 40B law is a state law that allows developers who include 20% affordability in their projects to override most of our local zoning. So even, even when it goes, I mean, it is important for you all to come to the zoning board of appeals hearings, but even before the, when it's before the zoning board of appeals, they have limited range within which to act.
But the zoning board of appeals can deny the project, but then it's appealed to the state, and then there are risks involved with that. So it's...
And how much influence does the town government have in terms of advocating or not advocating for this project based on community concern and local impact? Local negative impact? Well, we sent a very strong letter in the first time they presented to us, and you see it's come back smaller. So I guess we have some influence. We don't have nearly as much influence as we'd like when it's a 40B project.
So there was a 40B project several years ago where it was a different board of selectmen, but all five members of the board independently showed up to testify against the project, and the zoning board of appeals still approved it. So this board has a pulley pulpit, but in terms of practical ability to force changes to be made to a project or to try and get the zoning board of appeals to not issue a comprehensive permit, we're pretty much in the same situation as you are.
And one last question. These 40B proposals by developers, are they in response to a call from, from the town government that we need more, you know, affordable housing?
No. We're, we're getting close to our 10% limit in which we would no longer be subject to 40B. And so we've had a plethora of proposals come in trying to get under the wire before we get to the 10%, because it does allow them to build with much more density and, you know, without all the requirements that we have in our zoning bylaws. So, yes, it's not something we, we do like affordable housing, and we have tried to do that where we can. There have been some projects, we've used some town money to support. But these, many of the projects we've seen recently are not projects we have any interest in promoting, but we are subject to this, this state law.
But I will say, the zoning board of appeals, having observed the process in other projects, tries to be responsive to community concerns as much as they can, but, you know, 40B provides a framework with which they have to analyze the project. So if you're going to be advocating against the project, you should try to familiarize yourself to the framework that 40B provides and then hit the points in that framework. Because those are the pressure points that the ZBA can push back on. But if you, if you come and say, oh, I don't like it, you know, in general, that, that's not going to work.
Yeah, because this is all new to me.
Right.
Coming to this completely unknowable. But you've been very, very helpful in your answers tonight. I just want to lend my voice to a lot of the things that a lot of people have expressed tonight, so I won't repeat it. I will mention though that over the years, various of the small business retailers in Coolidge Corner have told me they've either moved to the Chestnut Hill Mall, they moved to Back Bay, all right, because of lack of parking. Because even though people, there are not people who live in the Coolidge Corner area who do walk, people who want to purchase some, something of a size, or even people from the outskirts of Brookline want to drive in, and there's no place to park.
Mm-hmm.
So, just reiterating everything, everything everybody else said about parking.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Roberts?
Hello. My name is Susan Roberts. I live on Green Street, which is right around the corner from this building, and I represent Precinct Two as a town meeting member. The picture that we're looking at now is actually, I believe, taken from Precinct Two. So I did want to comment on the revised proposal. I did comment before when the proposal was first presented. I appreciate the fact that we now have a smaller version of what we saw before, but I would have to agree with Selectman Heller that we have a terrible project, and now we have a little bit less terrible project. I think that, I would like, I would like to make two points. One is relating to the character and fit within the neighborhood, which is an issue and which is 40B issue as well and can be considered. What is interesting to me is that the elevations that we've been shown do not put this particular project in context with the other buildings that are along the block. So we see very little of what else is there. And as a result, I think that it's a little bit disingenuous to see this picture without what else is remaining on the block, which of course is much lower in height. So to give you an idea of the variance that we're talking about, where we in a position to require the proponent to obtain a variance, we're talking about 80 feet or so. So I think the height for this area is 45 feet, and the project is 122 feet. And the reason I know this is that it's in the application, the new revised application. They did a very nice zoning table, what I would do myself, where they just went through and said what the current standard is and what they would need a waiver for. So that's where I got that information just now, in case you're looking for it. So again, I do have serious concerns about, you know, the massing of the project, how it all looks in Coolidge Corner, besides the fact that it will add so many, you know, people and cars to this area. And of course, I echo as well what has been said about safety and traffic and, you know, trash and delivery and so forth, having, you know, been a frequent shopper at Trader Joe's. But the other thing I also wanted to point out that no one has mentioned is the fact that there's also construction going on at 44 Longwood, which is less than a half a block. And so we're, we're getting into a really seriously busy area of construction with a project going forward here as well. So that's what I want to say.
Thank you.
Oh, one question I do have for you. At town meeting this past time, in November, there was a resolution at the end of town meeting that, where town meeting members voted in favor of the resolution, which as I recall, was a message to town officials to aggressively challenge whatever we possibly can under 40B. So I just wanted to say that I think that is, I don't know if I'm, I'm sure I'm not saying directly what the warrant said, but I think I'm getting the essence and spirit of what the, what the warrant resolution was. So I think it's still important for all of us to remember, town meeting has asked the town to take this approach.
Mm-hmm. We hear you.
Good evening. I'm Roger Goldstein. I live at 70 Sewell. I've lived there for two years and lived just outside Coolidge Corner for almost 30 years before that. A couple of comments. I think this is fundamentally moving in the right direction, but I think the, the challenge of the project is much more about its traffic impact than about its, its massing, although I think it's still probably maybe twice as large as it ought to be. The, I will echo, as I have in writing after the first hearing, all the concerns about safety and traffic. Sewell Avenue is, is a huge mess. And I'd like to reframe the parking issue... And I'd like to reframe the parking issue by pointing out, as everybody knows, that the Trader Joe's overflow lot, we'll call it, is, if that goes away, you're basically reducing the supply. At the same time, you're now increasing the demand on parking in the area by whatever the differential is. By adding 100 cars, I think more than compensates for the loss. So you're, you're, it's basically a double whammy. And so since Sewell Avenue has little or no capacity to handle it, I think that's really a fundamental problem. I would like to support the suggestion that was made earlier about considering making this a true transit oriented development by basically eliminating resident parking in the building, perhaps reserving it for retail. And I, I will throw another suggestion in that just occurred to me this evening, which is, since it appears the post office isn't going anywhere, and since I think there's a general sense that retail in Coolidge Corner has a challenge, and I'm particularly skeptical of the viability of the second floor retail, I will offer to the developer to consider actually rehousing the post office in the new building instead of the retail. And instead of taking as much of the rear lot as the proposed development takes, that you reduce the footprint in the back and, and help the entire Coolidge Corner area by accommodating all of the postal office trucks on that, on your, your property. Which then would free up the post office site to be redeveloped at a later date at some modest level of development. And I'll just leave that suggestion.
Interesting. Of course, there needs to be another cooperating party, the post office.
Well, yes. We understand that. But we're, all of us in the neighborhood suffer with the fact of the post office. The trucks, postal workers seem to have carte blanche and there seems to be no enforcement. So anything even half their size is going to exacerbate the problem.
Okay.
That's an interesting suggestion. And if it could possibly work, it'd be great. I'd just like to make a point. Maybe I'm the only one on the board who thinks this. But if you don't provide parking, doesn't mean that people won't bring cars. We have plenty of buildings in this town that don't provide parking. And people go out and park their cars in heat islands, which can't be good. So, you know, that's my opinion. And I think it's important that people think about that. Yes, sir.
Excuse me, my name is Ken Wexler. I live at 70 Sewell Avenue also. Just wanted to mention two things. I think the architect and the consultant totally glossed over the situation in the back of the building in terms of parking and dumpsters and loading docks. And developers' answers that he's going to do it like Trader Joe's does. And to me, that meant he's going to come in from Beacon Street and I can just see them marching through the front lobby with everything that should be going out the back to the lock, loading dock. And I think it's a real problem that just how it's going to possibly work to get access to that building. And never mind if both elevators are working or not, you still get cars in, they back up a little bit and they're out in the street in a minute. It happens, you know, all the time. I think the fact that the building looks so much smaller, I agree with the selectmen because it was too big in the first place. So anything would look better. And lastly, it's, it's more than just the parking. I just want to add my voice about the, the street. If you're driving down Harvard Ave and you're looking at your waves and you're looking at your Google Maps, it tells you to go down as a shortcut. Come down Sewell, take a left on Charles or go up to Beacon. And in the morning, Brexit, I mean, the Bridget buses are there all the time. 18 wheelers come down through there. It is, it has become a major shortcut. And you say, well, with all the traffic, how could it become shortcut? Because out on Harvard Street and Beacon, it's so much worse. So I just think this is totally inappropriate for the site.
Okay.
Good evening. I'm Lisa Shivdasani of 51 Sewell Avenue. I echo everything that has been said this evening and just want to add a couple of very quick points. First, I just want to thank the board for taking another long evening, listening to a lot of input from community members. And we really do appreciate, because you did hear us the last time, and we really appreciated the letter that you wrote. I recently moved my mother into Brookline. And I've had the experience, she moved into a 55-plus community. And I was thinking all the time, gee, I'll just drive my car down there and park and go visit mom. And I have to bring, you know, things to her and insure or whatever it is. And I've come to realize in a 55-plus community, there is never any parking. Between the caregivers, the social workers, the insured deliveries, you name it, the nurses, the ambulances. I have never once been able to park at my mother's building. I walk. And so I'm just concerned, now having this personal experience of all these caregivers, what's going to happen in this neighborhood and where are these people going to park their cars? Because I equally also had the experience this summer of having some construction done at our home. And there were many times when I actually had to find parking for my own vehicle, my personal vehicle. And I have a Sewell Avenue sticker, which was useless and worth nothing. And most days I had to find parking four to six blocks minimum from my home, most of which was paid parking somewhere else. And that was being a resident in Sewell Avenue. So I'm very concerned about this project and do hope that you also consider to write a letter, as you did last time, to hopefully, again, the proportions here are all done with respect to what was an arbitrary line of 14 stories. Let's look at this project from what is by right allowable in this location and then come up with something that does support affordable housing, but also respects the neighborhood and the rules that have been made because of the neighborhood's needs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening everyone. I'm Mike Clow. I live on Pleasant Street and I belong to Temple Sinai. I've been a member for about 30 years. Quick tour, as you come down Sewell Avenue, as you all know, first off, we have the parking lot for the bank on Harvard Street, on Longwood rather. Then you come to the parking lot for Trader Joe's where we have a detail cop and their own security guard managing parking. As you may recall, a couple of years ago, someone's killed in that parking lot. Coming around Sewell is a couple, the parking lot, then the post office. Come by around eight o'clock in the morning, you have the cars double parked. Postal employees and their trucks double parked along the street. You will never get a fire truck. And if you recall, about 35 years ago, our school building burned up. So it is a life hazard. We have children there from Art Barn, who's a tenant of ours, our own religious school and several other tenants in the building all the time. Not to consider the rioters there. And we have people coming and going all the time to see our rabbis. As you come around, there's a mental health clinic on the corner across the street from us where we rent space on the weekends. And then you've got the two-way bizarre street where you can come in halfway to this street and then sort of turn around again. But nobody knows that. So they come down the one-way street beyond the turn and then either come down Sewell the wrong way because they don't know what to do, or they turn around and all of that. So that's a quick tour. What's going to happen when construction starts is my, my main question. And lastly, it's a great schematic. What happens to the employees' cars? Because we've got all these spots for the tenants and we have parking for the customers. But there's going to be people who are going to work here. And we haven't heard about where they're going to park their cars. And lastly, I have to say, this is a great picture. It looks like it's in Dover. We have all these trees and we have no neighbors. Where's the post office? Where's the health clinic that's on the corner? You know, I mean, I think that's the Charles River behind it. But it's, it's clearly a, almost an optical illusion of what Coolidge Corner looks like. Not to mention the million cars that are trying to find a parking spot. So I would be willing to help you craft a letter to the state to say that this is not a good place, not a good time, and not a good building.
Okay. Anyone else wish to speak? What I've done in the past is tried to help our planning staff craft the letter by summarizing many of the things we've heard. My summary is probably not going to be as good since I've been.
No, I just have a question. Has anybody contacted the post office? Because they are really adamant about, you know, making their, their trucks can park anywhere, their employees can park anywhere.
There've been discussions with the post office.
And they're okay with this?
And they're, well, whether they're okay with this.
No, it's the US government. That's all I'm saying.
I thought the post office was privatized a long time ago.
Now you're thinking 10 years from now.
Yeah. I'll also remind you before I go through some of my notes and I'll ask some of my colleagues to pitch in. Next week, I believe it's, is it next week? That we're having our hearing on a project that's almost across the street from here. The 21-story.
Luxury apartment.
Waldo Durgan. And while they've, the developer of that particular project has agreed to engage with the town and explore alternatives to the 21-story glass tower, we have to take the 21-story glass tower proposal seriously. And we'll be having a similar hearing that we had for this, for that project too. And hopefully, you know, we'll be able to send appropriate comments. So the sense of the room and I think the board is that the revisions move in the right direction, but we still have serious concerns about the appropriate massing and size of the project in the context with its surroundings. But the biggest concern that I've heard, and I really have, concerns the relationship of this building to Sewell Avenue and the effect of the building on Sewell Avenue. And that the traffic study is going to be very, very important and really needs to look at the queuing and the effect and the adequacy of the, of the auto elevators and how practical the whole scheme of the way the parking is set up is going to work. I think too, that we need to study the, the parking ratios. As Ms. Sidney said, the, we've lost something like 85 parking spaces, yet we've only lost 35 units. And the ratio's gone down from assuming they're all for the residential, 1.7 to 1.3. But how is the, the parking ratio going to work with respect to, you know, residential versus the retail? And is, and is the parking for the retail sufficient? Especially being that only six spaces are in the, are surface parking. The rest will require valet. And that's going to have to really be proven, I think. The, the loading and the loading scheme needs to be studied. We should comment on the disputed facts that we've heard regarding egress to the adjacent building. This board isn't going to litigate that, litigate that and, or adjudicate that, that's a better word. We're not going to. But I think the, the state agency should be aware of it. The relationship to the synagogue and, and the number of children walking past should be commented upon. And the safety issues related to that need to be studied. And that's actually one of the important tenants within the 40B framework that we can actually comment on and push back on. So that's, that's, that's important. What have I missed?
Well, I'm, I'm just going to say, you know, I know that the post office is frustrating for many of you who live in the area. And we have been working with them as to where their trucks are and so forth. But that is the main post office for Brookline. And so I certainly am not in favor of, you know, or, I mean, I think we need to establish in this letter that the post office is critical to Brookline. I mean, even now, there is the little one in Brookline Village and then this one. And I always figure that it's going to take me a half an hour in line when I have to mail a package or something like that. I certainly don't want to do anything that means, and I'm, I'm not going to suggest to anybody that they start clearing the post office trucks off that. You know, we need to work with them about where they're parking. But, you know, suggesting that, that 90 other cars come in and we'll clear the post office trucks out of the way for 90 cars to come to this site is not something that I, I think is in the town's best interest, you know? I mean, the post office, we, we don't want to make, you know, they, they've had their financial difficulties. A while ago, they were talking about closing that, that which is, as I say, our main post office branch. So, you know, I think it's absolutely critical to the town that the post office is able to continue in operation there. And I do think that the, the number of cars going onto an already busy street is very problematical. I'm happy to see the height coming down on the project. It's, it's still very large, but it looks a lot better. But this, the traffic, the loading, all off of Sewell seems to me to continue to be a giant problem. Particularly as we've heard, you know, that, that there are people in wheelchairs in that area, people walking to the grocery store and the post office, children going to the programs at the synagogue. So I think we have to really take a look at that because it's hard for me to see how this, this project would not make things substantially worse on an already difficult street. And, and as I say, the, the difficulty on that street is perhaps largely due to the post office. But that's a critical service for our town. So, you know, that's not one, we're not going to eliminate them in favor of, of this project.
So I agree with the, especially with two points that have been made. One about the impacts on Sewell Avenue. I think, I won't expand upon that because I think we all understand the difficulties we have there. And with the deliveries, I think the, the potential for conflict between pedestrians on Sewell Avenue and trucks backing in and out of a delivery dock is troublesome. And while I am a customer of UPS and FedEx, I have observed that those drivers are perhaps some of the laziest drivers in the world and will look for any place to put their car because in their minds, 30 seconds of running in and out justifies double parking or blocking a sidewalk. I want to add one thing to the letter around height massing of the building. In our previous letter, we observed that this location is at the crest of a hill. So any height is exacerbated by the fact that when you're looking down from lower Beacon Street, you've got natural topography amplifying 100 and now 22 feet of height. To the point that was made at the, the outset of the hearing by, by the proponents, it is true that there are some buildings within a couple of blocks that are 140 some odd feet, 160 some odd feet. But we heard, and rightfully, that those buildings have a generous setback, that there is some landscaping which minimizes the, the sense of a tower looming over you when you're standing right next to it. And I think that warrants being in the letter as well to say, yes, there is some tall buildings in the general vicinity, but they're different in terms of the, the experience that a pedestrian has when looking up at them from down the hill or standing next to them.
I'd like to say that I support both selectmen.
I'd like to say that I support both Selectman Franco and Selectman Daly's comments. And I, I agree with Selectman Green that the parking is a serious problem. If you take it away, it's a problem, and if you leave it there, it's a problem. So, I, I really think we must stress to this day that there is, there is even safety issues here, and that the massing is aimed by the, by the height of the park. So, I'm going to leave it at that. It's late, and I know we'll have a crack at this letter next week.
Okay.
Selectman Green. I'd just like to add, you know, I think the most important thing is the congestion on Sewell. And like the developer said, he has an obligation to fix that. I mean, it's there. Post office is not going away. We don't want it to go away. But it seems to me that almost anything that he does is going to exacerbate it, unless you can come up with some creative, outside-the-box solution to the parking problem, that would be a win-win for all of us. In the absence of that, I just don't see how it is possible to deal with the congestion of, of that street. That is a horrible street, based on my experience. And, you know, it's critical that, that, that the congestion should be addressed. We're getting, it's late.
Just one quick comment. I, John Mazza, living Longwood. We're all focusing on Sewell, and rightfully so. It's a disaster area. But I would just urge, because it sounds like there's going to be a traffic study done, I would urge you to just please also consider, you know, how the dominoes fall, you know, extending up and down Longwood Avenue, which can also be quite heavy, down to St. Paul, that traffic intersection. You know, it's, we all know it's an absolute disaster on Sewell, but this isn't just, you know, simply isolated problem.
Right.
This is something that's going to be affected.
Yep, that'll, that'll be done.
Okay.
Okay. I think, thank you all for coming, and hopefully we'll be able to incorporate your comments into our letter in a similar way that we did last time. So, thank you all, and...
We do, if you send in letters, we do append them to our, our letter.
Yep. Okay, thank you. I'm going to go to sleep. Yeah. Selectman Green, those folks are people.
Yeah, yes, yes.
Of course. Hey, are we done?
Yes. I'm going to head on down to, thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
So, it's outside of any restrictions, any zone that we have in town. So, as long as it's EBA advising to the scheme, the proposal.
I mean, technical, yeah, there's a way. Right. No, it's not like a spell.
From one of the tenants.
40B would be the project.
Economically required, and their regulations.
It's true. It's a 40B house.
40B says, well...
When there's a mixed bunch.
Sorry.
I don't think so. Yeah, most of these projects do have some...
That would be, that would be up there. Derek.